All right, seven to two, we'll call the meeting. Mr. Bailey, please listen and pledge allegiance to the religions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on your ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Records show Mrs. Dickman is absent, all the board members are present, Mr. Board has public notice been given?
It has, we are working off the revised agenda with the student council report, as well as the preliminary tax levy ten E and some closed agenda language.
Hello? Free call nine, radio check. I don't hear it now, I think we're good. All right, public comments, policy zero one six seven point three, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the original school district, the parent or legal guardian, open enrolled district student, board enrolled district student. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments or use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons or make specific person the subject of their remarks, please see policy zero one six seven point three. For a complete list of requirements and restrictions, if a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Coleman?
No one.
Thank you. Two reports, district administrator report.
Okay, so a handful of things, first off, last week was Board Appreciation Week, and on behalf of our employees, our students and our entire district, we wanted to make sure that we thanked the board members individually and collectively for your dedication and support to our district. And so, as a token of our appreciation, Mrs. Steele and Mrs. Stoltz put together a goody basket to show our appreciation for each of you, so you've got some booby buckets there with some items from some local constituents. So, thank you so much for all you do, Kenwood, thank you.
Please forward her thanks.
What's that?
Please forward her thanks.
We certainly will, I certainly will. Okay, then, a handful of dates and some reminders coming up here, this Wednesday, October 16th, there is no school for students, this is our parent teacher conferences, parent teacher conferences will be held from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's an earlier start time to try to accommodate schedules for more families in our community. Next Monday, October 21st, that is a special meeting, that is our annual meeting, that is a meeting that will be run by our stakeholders of our state, of our community, and so our annual meeting will be in this location, IMC, starting at 6:30, 6:30, not the traditional seven o'clock time for board meetings. Next Wednesday, October 25th, we will have our committee meetings, Buildings and Property is at six o'clock, reminder that personnel has already had their meeting for the month, so Buildings and Property will be at six o'clock, and then Policy and Curriculum will both start at 7:30, and then all the committee reports will do the second board meeting of the month, so we can just get caught up on all of the board member reports at that time. Any questions from the board? Again, thank you for all you do.
For the parent teacher conferences, do the students or parents need to schedule a time slot with their teachers?
We'll turn to the building administration, primary school, Mrs. Hardy?
Yes, at the primary, they do, and if they haven't had a chance to yet and want to connect with their classroom teachers, they should call the school and we can get on that right away.
High school is?
They just stop in and drop in.
Yep, but they certainly can, if they want to schedule, they can reach out to teachers and do so.
And, Mrs. Hardy, do you happen to know?
I believe they're doing more like the high school at the third through sixth as well.
That's my assumption as well.
But again, if they want a specific time or want to have enough time set aside to have a personalized conversation, I would encourage them to reach out to the intermediate school to do that.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
All right, the student council report.
I believe we have Mr. Culver.
Yeah.
Now I want to just push that button there on that microphone so it turns green and then you should be good to go.
Yep.
Already green?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Hello, everyone, good evening, my name is Kieran Culver, and I am a junior here at RCS, and I am the corresponding secretary for the student council. A couple of weeks ago, we wrapped up all of our homecoming celebrations, and it was largely a success, we had a great dance with, I think, I'm pretty sure we were, said we had like the most attendance in many years, so that's very, very exciting. We had great class participation in skates, calims, power club volleyball and football, and overall, it was really fun. And so going forward, we are just analyzing what we did with homecoming and seeing if there's anything we can change and improve upon going forward. Are there any questions I can answer for any of you tonight?
Do you have any major events coming up, obviously homecoming is pretty big, what's your next big project that's coming up?
Right now, we are working on, we have, I believe, at least two blood drives planned for the rest of the year, and then in December, we have wrestling concessions, which is the main fundraising activity of our council.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2024?
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Donald Miller, discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
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 Hi. Financially items, the approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated September 30th, 2024, and the community first bank general checking accounts checked number eight six six three eight through eight six six four eight, ACH numbers two four two five zero one nine three seven through two four two five zero one nine four one, for a net total of $604,000, or $400 and $880.25. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Donald Miller, you're second.
I'll second.
Seconded, Mr. Huntimer, Mr. Bosworth, anything you want to add?
Nothing to add tonight, pretty typical is the invoices.
Discussion. Mr. Wayne Landite?
Aye.
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 All right, the school finance presentation, number three.
Okay, so you have heard from Mr. Bosworth in the last couple of board meetings on some different financial topics, and as we continue to build on that series, this is the third of four parts, fourth ending on the 28th, when the board will adopt that final budget, okay? Mr. Bosworth, whenever you are ready, you can take it away.
Two mouse arrows on here. Making my head pop.
Is there something, I'm touching the screen, John, that would be?
If I can see.
Can you tap the presentation?
Try it.
All the good tech stuff happens to jump.
Just work thirty minutes ago. There weren't your mice. We'll find out, we eliminated one of them. Okay, thank you. Part three, tonight, I'll talk about equalized value in a little bit more detail, talk about referendums, back the revenue limit worksheet, and then take a look at the tax bill. Okay, equalized value. This is a table of the equalized value by municipality in our school district, so you can kind of ignore this TID in, that's a special tax scenario, we're not using that one, we're using the TID out, equalized value. So, the city of Richland Center has a total equalized value, property value of $409,536,200. That represents 35.76% of all the equalized value in the whole school district, so that means that the city of Richland Center needs to pay for 35.76% of the total tax bill. And then, of course, that, whatever that bill is, is divided up amongst all of the city residents. And then on the top, town of Aiken, they have a total equalized value of $54,38,473, that represents 4.72-ish percent, so Aiken needs to pay for their fair share, and they need to pay 4.72% of the total tax bill, whatever we set in a couple of weeks. And then the other thing that I'd like you to recognize for equalized value is, these numbers here on the right, those are the numbers we just literally looked at, and under the 2023 column, those are last year's values, so the column to the far right is interesting, that's the percent change. So you can see that the city of Richland Centers' equalized value, property values, are basically unchanged, they're up 1%. And then on the opposite end of that, Unabista is up 18%, and the overall, the entire district is up 8%. So these are still very high growth rates compared to history. I don't know what's going on, me and the town of Orion, I'm not sure if that's some annexation or what that is, but I'll just kind of leave that one be for now, but I just kind of want you to see, the O R average is eight, the lowest is the city, the highest is Unabista, and the township of Richland is kind of right in the middle there at 8%. And then this graph is showing us the net, the new net construction. Remember last time, we talked about the idea of, if there's a lot of new construction inside of a municipality, that would be new property, and the new property could kind of eat up any sort of tax increases that were in that municipality, if there isn't new construction, then the existing tax owners are the ones who pay the increases. So over on the, and this is, this is the entire county, this is not just the school district, I couldn't find just the school district broken out, but I think what I kind of want you to see is overall on the far right, the percentage of new construction value versus the overall equalized value, these numbers are very small, they're not very big, there's not a lot of construction in these municipalities, and so we should be assuming that most of the growth in equalized value is due to inflation. And especially the areas that we're going to kind of look at real closely tonight, the city of Richland, .16%, that's essentially zero, we will look at Unabista, third from the top there, that's at .41, again, that's essentially zero, and we're also going to look at the town of Richland, and they're right in the middle there, .79, so all of those are essentially zero growth, so we need to keep that in mind when we think about taxes and who's bearing the burden of the tax increases, okay? Secondly, how does a referendum affect a revenue limit? So I have to close this for a second and open up a couple of documents. Can you close that now, so I can open up the separate one?
Did I escape on the keyboard?
The really core revenue limit, I'm trying to show you. It's awesome. Can you offer pause? I think that may be it, everyone wants to turn it on? Okay, we've seen this before, this was a hypothetical school, this we looked at, they had 750 students, and they were steady eddy and never changed, and their overall revenue limit was $10,243,000, and they got $7 million in state aid, so their overall levy was $3,243,000, that's what the taxpayers needed to produce, and that was the mill rate, $0.26. So, what does a referendum do to the revenue limit worksheet? So the first sort of referendum would be an operational referendum, so the only thing that's different with this one is right here, I added $500,000, so maybe this community passed a $500,000 operational referendum, and so I want you to see that the only change that's happened here is this overall revenue limit has increased $500,000 to $10,743,000. If they stood at the same amount of state aid, that would, that would directly increase their levy by $500,000. Okay, so that's what, that's what an operational referendum would do, it would increase the revenue limit, and then the opposite type of referendum is a capital referendum, so I've removed the recurring or non-recurring referendum, so the tax, the revenue limit is back down to $10,243,000, but now, down here, down here, these folks have passed a capital referendum, so they're going to have some debt payments to pay each year, so now they, they can levy additional money, so you can see that the revenue limit is not changed, but also that the overall levy has again increased by a million dollars, and of course, that would affect, that would change the mill rate. So those are the two sorts of referendums and how they would affect a revenue limit worksheet. Okay. And then finally, here's a, just a made up tax bill that came in that same document that referenced last time, that the Department of Revenue produced, and you can read that to understand equalized value a little bit better. This probably looks very familiar to some of the tax bills that you folks opened up. Thing I, a couple of things I want you to notice here, the fair market value, right here, that's the same as equalized value. And this community, it doesn't say it on the tax bill, but this community had a mill rate of $11.91, so if you're curious about how to do the math, you would take the, excuse me, the equalized value or the estimated fair market value, and divide that by a thousand, because mill rate is per thousand, and then whatever you get there, so 367.6, you multiply that by the mill rate, which in this case is 11.91, and you would come up with about $4,378 of total tax that this person would need to pay for the school district, and then there is a school levy tax credit right here, so if you take that $4,378, and you subtract this number, 462.37, you will get about $3,914. That's kind of the math behind the tax bill and how total bill, total tax for a property owner is calculated using the fair market value, which is the same as the equalized value and the mill rate, and take out the school levy tax credit. Okay, so those are the three main things tonight, taking a look at the specific municipalities, how much those have increased, what their new net construction was, how does referendum affect the revenue limit worksheet, and then how do you kind of get around a tax bill? Any questions about those items?
I had a couple, the credit up at the top, who determines that, is that a state credit? Second question, you mentioned, the tax base would be responsible for whatever the increase is, so I would assume that would include just all property owners, meaning every business also would see an increase hypothetically, not just private residents?
Hypothetically, yes.
And then lastly on that, what about a school? Does the school who owns property also have to contribute to that increased tax bill, or are we exempt?
Steve? Need help with that one?
We are tax exempt, so we don't pay property tax, there are some entities that don't have to pay property taxes.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, 2024-25 draft budget.
Okay, so we have spent some time at the Personnel Negotiations and Budget Development Committee, in working on a 24-25 draft budget, they have seen that a couple of different times, once in August, again here, I believe the last one here earlier this, this month, and now the board is ready to see as a whole, a draft budget, again timelines, annual meeting, we'll adopt a budget, excuse me, we'll finalize the budget, and then the board will adopt the final budget on the 28th, and there are some changes that happen between the annual meeting and the, and the meeting on the 28th. Some school districts will actually have their annual meeting in July, and there's a lot of changes, we've pushed ours back to October, next Monday at the annual meeting, we'll have better information than we would in July, but it won't still, it won't mirror the final budget exactly. Mr. Bosworth, when you are ready, if you want to.
So there should be two documents, in your board docs, agenda item, one looks like this, this is the one that was sent to the newspaper, this is the format that the EPI asks for, it's not necessarily the one that we look at a lot locally, but it's separated by function, which is one of the accounting aspects that we use. The one that we're maybe a little bit more familiar with looking at is this local, local budget document. So we have some different columns here, these different columns here are just basically different iterations as we've made some changes to our budget, as we go through, as more information becomes available to us, we've continued to update this and show the budget committee. So I want to point out a few line items to you today, line seven, equalization aid, that number is up from last year, mainly because we were a higher spending district than we have been in the past, because we spent some extra money, and we also spent some extra money in deficits, which then results the following year in us being aided more, and if you remember the image with two different cups, so that means more green gets poured in, so maybe we have less blue, property tax to rely on inside of our cup. Line number 19, interest earned, interest rates are, continue to stay relatively high, so we're just trying to be a little bit more accurate this year of what we think may come. Line number 22, open enrollment, you'll notice that there was a kind of a bigger jump between the last two columns as some of those open enrollment numbers came in, so the number of students open and rolling in has increased, and you can see that dollar estimate has increased accordingly. And you can see that dollar estimate has increased accordingly. Line twenty-five, the sale of property is small, we don't have any plans to sell the buildings this year, so that number comes back down close to zero, which is what it is typically. It's pretty small. The next section there, Fund Ten Grant revenues, these are many of the grants that we use on a yearly basis. The hope with grants is that the revenues are going to equal the expenses. It's not something that you generally keep money, that hopefully you spend exactly what you earn within one year. There are some that allow you to carry things over, but most ask you to spend it all in one year. And then we get into some of the expenses projected for next year. Line fifty-three, this is district wide, you can notice a slight increase there as some of the estimates for money that is paid to the state voucher system have come in. We have increased our budget accordingly. Line fifty-five, open enrollment out. You can see that's pretty steady. I think Mr. Board is going to talk about student enrollment count numbers later. Probably give more detail on that. Line sixty-six, instructional salary benefits. That has increased for two main reasons. One is because as a district, we made an effort to increase the salary and wages of all of our employees. The other factor, just as important, is that we had a number of employees that were being paid for with extra money before, and money no longer exists. And those positions have had to come into the general budget. Down towards the bottom there, line seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, those are some new budgets that we've added this year, just to try to help improve the school district with some professional development, to help the new RC classrooms get furnished and set up, and then a special account to try to help increase the number of field trips or experiences that students receive. General expenses, grant expenses, those, that's identical to the grant revenues. Again, the hope is that whatever comes in goes back out. Onto the third page. I would highlight line one oh four. Okay, so the transfer from Fund Ten, this is part of a revenue. Remember that whatever, whatever special education expenses are not covered by grants or categorical aid from the state, have to be covered by the local school district. There is some talk that state expenses are currently reimbursed at about thirty percent. And there is some talk that that may increase in the future to maybe double, upwards of sixty percent. That would be a big step for school districts. It's not the case for this year, for twenty-four, twenty-five, that's a hope. Cross your fingers for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And then finally, I would just draw your attention to line one thirty-one. So this budget has changed already and will continue to change. October fifteenth, tomorrow, is the big day when the state finally gives the final total aid numbers for districts. And so our revenue limit has continued to kind of move back and forth by one or two hundred thousand dollars every time the state gives us new numbers to use. Every time that happens, we adjust our numbers. And our goal is always to aim for a balanced budget, to spend whatever we're given, not any more than that. And I think, right before I started, Steve mentioned the timeline here. Next week, right here, half hour earlier, we'll review this, it'll probably look slightly different. And as a community, we'll adopt the budget in the following week. Back to the school board setting, the board has the opportunity to make any changes to the budget. That needs to be, and then they will adopt the levy and we'll talk later on tonight about some of those levy ideas. That's it for my part, are there any questions?
They are obtaining their credits and they're passing all the classes. And some of, half of those graduated early. One of them, it's just one of our neat stories, is he was all set to graduate at semester time, but because he enjoyed the relationship that had developed with his mentor, he chose to stay for the rest of the year. And so he helped her within some of the music competitions, and he learned how to play the guitar and different things like that. So the mentors meet with their student on a weekly basis. And what we monitor within this program are grades, credit attainment, whether they have any discipline, and attendance. And that includes being tardy to class, because we noticed through all the data that we collected that students are tardy to classes more than once a day. And so it adds up, and when they're late to class, we know that they're missing instruction. So what the mentors will do is, once they meet with, when they meet together, they set goals on a weekly basis in regards to, could be from grades, getting homework completed, attending classes, all of that. And they do have a sheet that they complete on a weekly basis. And that's where our group will get together and we look at all this data to determine whether or not these kids are being successful or where we need to make some changes. Just from year one, we saw lots of good things happening where attendance was increasing, we saw discipline decreasing. Like I said, we had our seniors graduating and they were obtaining all the credits that they needed for the kids at our ninth through twelve. So starting this year, originally sixteen positions were approved. And I have sixteen mentors, we are mentoring seventeen students right now. And so my ask was for two more positions to be approved, just ahead, so I can fill those tomorrow. So we would have eighteen mentors and nineteen kids being mentored. So, yeah, I was told I had to keep this under ten minutes. Does anybody have any questions?
So we saw obviously there's a need.
Yes.
And with having the additional two positions, if we approve that tonight, how many more students do we have that are essentially on a waiting list for mentors that?
I get names, so the two, I've already got some names that were shared with me. And so, I mean, our group is just starting to meet, so we're looking at the data and we will start looking at some additional kids to add to our cohort list. I can't tell you right offhand the number. But it's not just that, just because I've got, you know, additional people up here and they may see a student that, you know what, they would really benefit from having a mentor. Not necessarily are they doing poorly in classes, but you can just see that, you know what, there's just not that connection to school. And that's part of this program, is building relationships and building that connection to school, because we know if we can do that with kids, they're more apt to want to be here and they do better. So that is, part of our goal is just to build those relationships, get these kids involved in the extracurricular activities and just, yeah, and just building that. So right now, I can't tell you how many more as the year goes. I would imagine that that list will increase. Yes?
When you made the presentation to the curriculum committee last month, you indicated that the monies for this program were a grant, so it wouldn't cost us anything?
Mm-hmm.
That's excellent. Based on what you had to say, I would like to move that we add two mentors to this particular program and that we get this underway.
It's on action.
Oh, I saw there was a cross over there. To be continued.
We will get to that point.
Yeah, and just another piece, the mentors are paid a five hundred dollar stipend and we came up with that amount from the building buddy. And so they are receiving that five hundred dollar stipend. And we have a job description, so they know the expectations of being a mentor. So there's that piece of it as well. Thank you.
Given all of the issues of Mr. Bosworth, I have a little cringe.
Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, third Friday membership count updates.
Okay, so I am going to be giving a little bit of an update. DPI, the Department of Public Instruction, has two official student counts. One is the third Friday in September count, the second is the second Friday in January count. Every school district in Wisconsin has to supply an official count on these two dates, and these are the numbers that DPI uses to generate all the things that Mr. Bosworth's been talking about, from revenue, grant money, those kinds of things, they're all part of our pupil count. Okay, and so where did we end up on our third Friday in September count? And so I've put together a little presentation. One, because I think it's a little easier to see visuals instead of just hear me talk numbers. But two, PowerPoint will keep me focused and in mind, so bear with me here. Okay, so I think in order to figure out, are we better, are we worse than we were, we need to know where we were. Okay, so this is our January, official January pupil count in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year, from EC on the far left all the way up to our graduating class of one hundred and eighteen in the spring of twenty-twenty-four. And that left us with a pupil count of one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six students. This was the number of people that the original school district educated last year, according to our pupil count in January. Okay, so when we look at that number, all right, how do we use this number and project forward? Okay, so well, if we take everybody from four K on up and we push them forward one year, right? Four Kers become five Kers, five Kers become first grade, first to second, and so on. Get rid of our graduating senior class, because I can guarantee you with a hundred percent certainty, those one hundred and eighteen students are not coming back this fall, all right? This is how we would start our school year, okay? We are going to assume for projections that we gain nobody, that we lose nobody, okay? This is our baseline. So we start off, we push all of those students forward, one grade, one hundred and eighteen drops off. And then we have to make a couple of assumptions with our small kids, okay? So our ECers, we use the number of twelve, prefer projection there. That's based on historical data, as well as information that we've gotten from the population studies that the Applied Population Lab out of UW Madison has done. We use twelve for an EC number, we use sixty-five for a four K number. Those are the two assumptions that we make. And if you add up all of those things, our baseline that we're talking about, what are we expecting for this year, is one thousand eighty-one students. That's negative fifty-five students, down fifty-five students from last year. How are we down? We lost one hundred and eighteen students in graduation, we replaced them with sixty-five four Kers, okay? That's the difference. All right, so what does actual numbers look like, realizing that this is our baseline data? This is, anything above one thousand eighty-one is a positive, anything below one thousand eighty-one would be less than we expected, because we've lost students. All right, so actual numbers. So what you're looking at here is, the blue is our projected numbers, and then the orange is our actual numbers, okay, actual numbers. And the first thing I'd point out here is that if you look at EC and four K, while we were up to in EC and down to in four K, the overall projection of seventy-seven students between those two grades was spot on, all right? Which means that everything else moving forward, we're comparing apples to apples with, all right? Because our projections, the one assumptions that we had to make, were accurate, within the two grades combined. So the primary school, five K, you can see is up two students in that cohort right there. We're up four in grade one, we're up three in grade two. As a building whole, our primary school is up nine students. This is great, great information, okay? Great news, especially given that our EC four K projections were spot on. Had those numbers been off, that wouldn't have necessarily told us as much information as it is. Those are spot on, seventy-seven students, we've actually regained in the other three grades, okay? So this is excellent news, that we're up ahead at the primary school from where we expected. We truly gained students there. Moving on to grades three through six, at the intermediate school, down a little bit. In our second graders moving to third grade, down two students there. Our fourth graders, we gained one, fifth graders are even, we've kept all sixty-five of them. And then our sixth graders, we've lost two. Primary, excuse me, the intermediate school as a whole is down three, okay? So we've lost three students. And just to point out, you look at like grade five, for instance, sixty-five to sixty-five, that's just net total, right? That could be five kids moving out and five new kids moving in, still creates sixty-five students, okay? So those are not actual individuals, this is our net total. All right, so down three at the intermediate school. How about the high school? Our high school is up at every single grade level. Grade seven is up fourteen students, grade eight is up a dozen, or excuse me, eight students there. A jump in grade nine, ten, eleven, twelve, all of them are up. And all of those together, in our high school, grade seven through twelve is up fifty-five students, okay? This is a huge number, all right? And a welcome sight to see that we're gaining students. Now, I will point out that we always expect an increase at the high school number, primarily because we get at private school that their educational opportunities end and they transition to the high school. We typically see that right here at grade nine. And you can see that that's true here, right? We went from eighty students last year in grade eight to ninety-nine this year in grade nine, likely due to St. Mary's ending their education at grade eight and those students transitioning in. But I think we also noticed a big increase at grade seven, that we saw fourteen students increase there. This is no longer fact, this is my opinion. I think that that might be due to the fact that we now have our seventh and eighth graders up here in this building. And there are families and students out there that are saying, well, if we're going to end up in this building, we might as well start them in that building. And I just tend to think that we might be seeing an increase in seventh grade as a result of having our seventh and eighth graders up in this building, okay? But you take aside those two classes, okay? The seventh grade and that influx of students, and then our ninth grade and that influx of students, those are thirty-three students between those two. That still is plus twenty-two at grades eight, ten, eleven, and twelve, okay? So outstanding numbers there as well. So again, blue is what we expected, orange is what we actually have. Across the board, that puts us at one thousand, one hundred and forty-two students. And so this is sixty-one students ahead of where we expected to be. It's actually six over our twenty-three, twenty-four numbers. And again, we lost one hundred and eighteen to graduation, replaced them with sixty-three four Kers, okay? And we're still more students in our district, educating our students in our building. Sixty-one students more than we had last year, okay? So that is exceptional news and just thrilled to share that with you. Okay, what does it look like from open enrollments, okay? This is one of our goals, addressing open enrollment. Again, let's look at, starting off, what did we have last year, twenty-three, twenty-four? This again is baseline data, we had seventy-nine students open enrolling into our district last year. We had two hundred and forty-nine open enrolling out of our district, living in our district and open enrolling to another school. That's a net of minus one seventy. And we know that this two forty-nine, that's an issue, right? The board has made that a priority to try, it's our only goal, right? Trying to address this open enrollment out issue from this third Friday count to the third Friday count in twenty-twenty-five, trying to really get a handle on this open enrollment. And I appreciate that, because I think that this is something that we've not addressed head on, okay? This number right here. But where are we at this year? All right, this is our open enrollment. All right, this is our open enrollment in by grade, all right? So you'll see that we have some grades as few as four, some grades as high as double digits, most of them in that six, seven, eight range. 79 was our number last year. This year, our open enrollment in is 96, okay? Plus 17. 17 students are coming, more students are coming in and choosing the Richland School District as their choice to do school, even though they don't live in our district, okay? Again, great news. Great news that students are choosing our district, okay? What about open enrollment out? Here is our open enrollment out count, again, by grade. You'll see that we've got a lot of grades in the 13, 16, 18, but then we do have a handful of grades that are in the 20s, okay? And so how does that compare? We're at 251. We were at 249. We actually increased our open enrollment out by two students, okay? That would not be great news, all right? So 249 to 251. So in summary, and I'm going to come back to the open enrollment out in just a little bit here, but in summary, this is where we're at, okay? 79 in last year, increased that to 96 this year. But then our open enrollment out went from 249 to 251. Our net gain is improving though, okay? We're no longer at negative 170, we're at negative 155. But throughout this process, I'm thinking we need more data on our open enrollment outs, okay? So what does this look like, all right? So one of the things I did was compare open enrollment out 23-24 to 24-25 by grade. There's a lot of information on this slide, but I'll show, tell you that the blue numbers, we pushed, or I pushed, the numbers forward, okay? So the blue bar in 5K shows 10. Those were 4Kers last year. There were 10 4K students that transferred out of our district. They are now 5Kers, okay? But I wanted to track them as a cohort, right? It doesn't, I didn't think it did a lot of good to track third grade to third grade. They're two different groups of students, okay? So I've pushed the blue numbers ahead, and you'll see at the bottom, I'm kind of referring to them as graduating classes. So our 5K students, this year's 5K, our graduating class of 2037. Last year, we had 10 students in that class, open enroll out. This year, we have 16, okay? So we have six more students in that cohort that are open enrolling out. Grade one, current first graders, or the class of 2036, we had 12 last year when they were 5Kers. This year, we have 13, okay? So we have one more student in that grade that's open enrolling out. And you can see across, the orange is a little higher than the blue in most grades. We do have the exception in grade six, we're down one student. And in grade seven, we're actually down four students, okay? But everybody else, or every other cohort, is actually up. And so this math didn't make sense to me. It didn't make sense to me that our pupil count is up, which is good. Our open enrollment in count is up, but not enough to offset the pupil count. And our open enrollment out is up, okay? So why is that? Well, there are two big reasons. And again, I'm stepping aside, outside of the fact, and I'm offering some opinion, some hypotheses, if you will, okay? One option would be that more students just moved into our district and they chose to educate themselves outside, all right? Well, you've seen the new construction numbers that Mr. Bosworth presented earlier. We don't have a plethora of new housing that has opened up in our district for students to move in and choose to open enroll out. So I didn't think that that was a viable option, all right? So then, I thought, well, one of the only other options that could happen, and we still need to look into this, okay? I'm just sharing a hypothesis with you. But there is the possibility that we could have had homeschool students last year that are no longer homeschooling, they are choosing public school, but they're choosing it elsewhere. For instance, online options, okay? I don't know if this is true, but maybe there are homeschooled students that are looking for online options. Our online options are limited in the number of students that we have, and therefore, maybe they're looking at options outside of our school district, which would be increasing our open enrollment out. So the one, just plausibility test that I did, was to see what does, what do our homeschool numbers look like in our district? And this is what I found. Last year, we had 163 homeschooled students in our district. This year, we're down to 120, all right? So it does seem like there's some plausibility there, that this could be the case. We need to still do some big dad diving into what this open enrollment outnumber is to really, really find out what's going on with our outnumbers. This might be one of the reasons, okay? Or it might at least account for some of the discrepancy, but it's still an issue, right? We still have a high open enrollment out numbers. So again, in summary, 1136 was our enrollment last January, 23-24. We were projected, lose that graduating class, bring in new kids to be at 1081. Our actual numbers were 1142, that's plus 61. Again, great, we increased our open enrollment in by almost 22%. Actual number of 17, also great, but we do still have an open enrollment out problem. We have gained two additional students that are now choosing educational options outside of our district. And this is why this has to be a goal of ours, a goal of our administrative league, as a staff and as a board, to address this, this open enrollment out concern we have. All right, a lot of info, short amount of time. Hopefully the visuals helped. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Board, do you know, maybe for a future meeting, do you have historical reference on the homeschool per year? I see this year and last year, I'm just curious if you have more data.
I do.
To give us kind of a general percentage of total pupils that will always choose to homeschool, for example?
Sure, yeah, I will gather that data and bring it to the curriculum committee, and then we'll see if that's information to bring to the entire board. You can definitely gather that. Mr. Johnson, would you make note of that for me, please? Any other questions? All right, so mostly good news, but I also don't want to sugarcoat it, because we still have, have an open enrollment out issue. Okay, thank you.
All right, odd action items, 10A, 2024-25 Change in Check and Connect Staffing.
So you heard Mrs. Goff and Mr. Jossem speak on the check and connect program. The ask is that we can go ahead and increase the number of mentors for the check and connect program by two for the school year. And that comes as a recommendation from the committee.
Is there a motion to approve the additional mentors for the check and connect program for the 2024-25 school year?
May I do that? I've got this done. Getting the new kid on the block, I still have to learn the ropes. So I, I move that we add the two mentors to this check and connect program because it was invented by the Board a year and a half ago. It was very successful last year. It became an exemplary program, and there are people that are waiting to get into it. I think it's a definite plus, so I move that.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dickman. Discussion?
Is there a training program for the mentors? So we know what they're looking for.
Mr. Jossem, you want to answer that, or Mrs. Goff?
Yes. That's the short answer. The long answer is, in order to save cost, Elisa can actually train her new mentors versus sending them to a conference, which is a wider, more expensive training.
Perfect.
And I wanted to confirm something from a previous committee. The current funding for this next year, including these two, that would be handled through grants, but that is not to say that money will always be available in future years.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
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 Okay, 2024-25 Change in Special Education Staffing.
Okay, so the Board, I'm sure you're very familiar that special education and staffing is very fluid. We have to be able to meet the needs of students that have information in their IEP. And so with this, and Mr. Jossem, if I leave anything out, feel free to jump on this, but we're essentially asking for two changes to our staff. One is a driver and assistant for transporting students, part-time positions. And the second is a reading and math instructor, not to exceed 20 hours. Mr. Jossem, you want to elaborate on either one of those? It's not in the memo, or?
I believe, from what your vantage point is, there's more information contained in the memo, but yes, we are needing to have a driver and aide in a van to transport a student to an alternative educational site. And then we also have a need to educate a student who is homebound, who is a special student.
Any questions from the Board?
Is there a motion to approve the special education staff changes for the 2024-25 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxel. Discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 Request for legal easement through district property.
Okay, so this came to the Buildings, Property and Transportation Committee a couple of months ago. We've been working with our legal counsel as well as the property owners. Brady and Rachel Ewing own property on the backside, that's up to the back of the school and up on the hill. And they are looking for an easement to be able to access that property through the district property. You'll see a contract there that was seen by the Buildings, Property and Transportation Committee, as well as, as by Mr. and Mrs. Ewing and legal counsel. The only thing on the contract that needs to be finalized, you'll see, is in red, and that's a legal description of the property that we can get from the clerk of courts, as well as, or the register of deeds, I should say, as well as the description of the actual easement. Essentially, Mr. Ewing is looking for down to the west, where his property is pretty close to ours, on the cornfield, be able to just enter through there. So we'll have to get some sort of a legal description of what that looks like, or maybe as simple as drawing it on a map. But essentially, he would have the ability to access it. Communication with the district would be important to make sure that he's not accessing it when it's going to interfere with school or school events. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the ask. Mr. Huntingmore from Buildings, Property and Transportation Committee, do I have anything to add that I missed?
It originated, it's been quite a while now, and Brady Ewing had mentioned that this was, they just wanted to start the process so that everybody could be on the same page. His intent was to do some logging, and so it would be a very seldom-used and likely to be done in one timeline at some point in the future. And so this wasn't going to be a every single day up and down the road at specific intent, because he's kind of landlocked from a safe, accessible perspective.
Got a question? So how does that work, then? Like, it's just a temporary easement? We get this paperwork signed, it's good for forever, or it's just good for a limited time?
I think there was a timeline on it, I believe.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's 10 years. It can be terminated by the district with notice, and it's not transferable. So if Mr. and Mrs. Ewing were to sell the property, that doesn't automatically transfer to them. They would have to do their own.
Okay.
Who is responsible for the cost of the construction of the property?
They are responsible for maintaining it. So if they would bring in a heavier piece of equipment, and the ground's a little soft, they may have to re-site it or fix it. It would be up.
In his current access, if I'm not mistaken, as, as you come into the driveway here, when you make the hard left, that's supposed to be an access road up over the embankment, and it's really not a proper slope.
Is there a motion then to accept the recommendation of the Buildings, Property and Transportation, and approve the formalizing of an easement between Brady and Rachel Ewing and the Richland School District?
I'll make that.
Motion made by Mr. Huntingmore.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Great, agreed to RCHS IMC.
Okay, so part of the referendum, our intermediate school is getting some IMC renovations done to it. It's part of the referendum project that Nexus had identified. It has been an ongoing wish of mine to improve the space in the high school level, okay? We have, as you look across the IMC, we have sightline issues in this space. It's difficult for an adult to monitor students that are on the other side of bookshelves. Much of the furniture in here is over 40 years old, and it's just not conducive to modern learning styles or modern space for our IMC. In addition, every board meeting that we have, furniture gets moved over to the side. Mr. Jones's custodial crew come in, and they bring in, set up tables, bring in chairs, set up chairs for the audience, et cetera, and the space even becomes more cluttered. And so one of the things that the proposal is, this has gone to Buildings and Property, as well as the curriculum committee. Last year, 23-24, we reaped the rewards of having a higher-than-normal fund balance, and, because we had preclaimed Esther dollars the year before, and we had historically-high interest rates. And so while we were expecting $30,000 in interest revenue, we ended up closer to $300,000. We'll be closing out the budget in the future here. Mr. Bosworth will go into that in more detail. But we essentially have this one-time revenue that came in that, you know, we could just put into fund balance and let it sit there, and that's where it's at right now. But I am proposing, and propose to the committees, and it comes up the recommendation of the committees, that we look at upgrading this space into something a little more modern. And so this PDF is in there. This is an aerial view. It's actually got to be flipped 180 degrees. This is the hallway that you're looking at right out here on the right-hand side. This is the parking lot over there. First thing I'm going to point out is that the space that's here, the area that you are in right now, when this is used as a classroom or as a learning space, it's set up like you see on the board, okay? However, instead of moving the furniture off to the side and bringing in new furniture for a board meeting, all of this furniture is modular, and so these tables are set up and reconfigured in a way that would form the U that you see for the board meeting. And the chairs that are there would be for the audience, okay? And the only thing that the custodial crew would have to bring in would be the chairs that the board members and administration are sitting on right now. that, that the board members and administration are sitting on right now. Uh, those wouldn't be out here. So this is already going to be a much more efficient way, um, to show this. I'm going to slide down to three different, uh, virtual 360s and walk you through the space just a little bit. And the first is, um, down on, on the southern end. Okay, so let me swing around here. Yes, our view isn't quite as green as this. We have a parking lot out there, um, but that's what you're looking at. Okay, that's the windows out there. And so all of the furniture, uh, would be modular. You'll see it's got wheels, it can all be moved around. All of the furniture is set up in an environment that is conducive for students to be able to be comfortable in different learning spaces, magazine rack in the back. Um, and then if you look across, kind of again, looking from that side over, you'll see that all the bookshelves in this scenario are, uh, much shorter. And so create much better sightlines, create a much more open and welcoming environment, and still allow for ample, um, shelving for all of our students. You'll see in the space, there are several of these little individual reading nooks and opportunities for students to sit and just kind of, uh, get away a little bit. And then there is also a space, what's called maker space, uh, area. Some, a lot of what our common school funds are, are used for in addition to books, but a lot of it is also increasing our, our students' exposure to, um, science, technology, engineering, and those kind of, uh, spaces. And so this kind of creative area, um, and nice areas for everything to be put away, it, it's kind of in that area. Uh, let me pop back over to the middle view. Um, okay, so this would be, oops, from the middle. This is the circulation desk where Mr. Detnun's current space is over there by the copier. That's looking there. Again, you're now kind of in the middle of all of the storage units, looking towards the boardroom right here. This is the screen that comes down from the wall. Again, uh, 360, some collaborative, uh, learning areas, uh, technology areas for students to work in small groups on computers. Of course, they all have one-to-one devices, but there still is the need to sometimes get together and work. Again, looking back out towards our green parking lot. And then finally, uh, the last virtual image would be the space that we're currently in. And again, all of these tables, um, are selected specifically to be able to rearrange these tables and create the U that you see and that you're sitting at, uh, right now. Again, this would be, um, not necessarily this kind of a screen, but this is where you're looking right now at this space. And then again, we've got our sound equipment and stuff back here. Um, but again, all of this is modular. I should point out also, all of the shelving, um, you can't really see it from here, but there's actually about a quarter-inch gap between the bottom of the toe kick and the top of the carpet. These are all on casters, okay? Uh, steel casters, and these are completely movable, um, with books in them. So when we do have to, uh, do carpet repair, carpet cleaning, just rearrange the IMC, uh, these are all movable without us having to remove all of the books. And the moving mechanism by Demco has a lifetime guarantee, a lifetime warranty on that. So we don't have to worry about, um, them breaking down and deteriorating. Um, they should be able to withstand the test of time. Okay, so this is kind of an overview of what, uh, the proposal is. Um, the cost is going to come in around $275,000. Um, I'm proposing that we take that out of fund balance, knowing that we had some additional revenue in interest, and that we upgrade our IMC so it's a more welcoming environment for our students so that it can be used a little bit more efficiently, that our teachers can bring students in and work collaboratively as well. And, uh, if approved, um, the general timeline would be that, uh, sometime at the end of January or early February, Demco would come in and they would assemble all of the shelves. And then, uh, we would take the next four to six weeks and take all of the books off and put them on the shelves. Again, you gotta remember, these are, these are movable. We would put them on the shelves, and then Demco would come back in over spring break, and they would finish the, um, the assembly of everything else and, and get the IMC looking as it is on the diagram. They would take care of all of that. When our students come back from spring break, uh, they would have a newly furnished IMC or new furniture. So that's the proposal. I'm happy to, uh, go into any detail, any, any more than I need to. I know it's been to a couple of committees. Committee heads, anything to add? Or Dr. Johnson, anything within this?
From the two committees that I'm on, uh, for everyone who was in attendance at the meetings with this discussion, we were a 100% unanimous, um, not only for what potential can be for the students themselves, but also the safety perspective. I believe 1972 is the furniture date. Um, the height of it alone presents a major problem if one of those bookcases were to ever tip over, um, not to mention the sightlines. And so we were presuming yes, and thought it was a wonderful suggestion.
I was born in 71, so I'm going to just continue to go with that about 40 years. So, I call that good.
With the volume of books, would we need to eliminate any of the current books to get it on the, the new shelving? Or is the new shelving going to be essentially equivalent to what we have?
Yeah, we went through a pretty extensive weeding process at all of our buildings, and high school included. Our current, um, collection is right around 11,500, um, and Demco has allocated enough, uh, shelving uh, for our shelves to be about 75% full, and 75% full is, allows for 13,000 books. So 75% is still, um, more than enough space. Now, obviously, those are averages, but I don't, I think we're a very average library. So we should have plenty of shelving space, um, for now and in the future.
And then the disposal of the current furniture, would that be, has that been discussed and decided?
If, uh, they make it through the move and they're in decent shape, I would tend to think that we would, um, do what we do with any unused or unwanted equipment, and that's put it on Wisconsin surplus. If it's not, um, safe, um, and again, it's, it's a possibility, then we would just dispose of it.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
How long ago was this project perceived? When did you get it?
Ooh, it was a brainstorm. We had Demco come in, I believe, uh, right after the pandemic, so 2021, 2022. And then we had some great configurations that changed. The, these, these shelves here in the middle, uh, were brought from one of our other buildings, and so we needed some time to get our collection down to a manageable, um, number. And then the funding, you know, was, was an issue. Um, and we didn't know if we were going to go to referendum, and if we were, to what extent that would be, and so on and so forth. So it's probably been about a, a three-plus-year, um, you know, pipe dream.
Okay, and according to the data on this from Demco, and this was about two months ago, they, they published this for sure, and we became aware of it a short while ago. Uh, during any of this portion, when this was being considered, was the librarian or other teachers involved with this decision?
On the front end, no. Um, we wanted to hear from the industry experts, um, and so they put together this model. And, uh, you know, the last thing I would want to do is get somebody's hopes up if this was going to come in. We didn't know if it was going to be a $100,000 project or a half-a-million-dollar project. And so, uh, we got the cost. It was, um, put on hold for a while, and then once it kind of came to fruition, then since then, um, we have spoke with the, uh, IMC directors.
Okay, I'm in full compliance with what you're suggesting here, but my concern is in that we are a hive, uh, that the people that would be manning this area, using this area, be consulted and considered as we come up with the final plans for this. So if we were to pass this this evening, which I believe as well, I'd like to make sure that they have voice in the final product so that we make all the considerations that maybe they would consider that we might not, you know, that we come up with the best product. So if we pass it this evening, I want it to be with the understanding that they will be a part of the final product.
Yeah, uh, very similar to referendum, um, and I made this comment before. We certainly want, uh, folks' input. Uh, people change. This isn't going to change for the next 30 to 40 years. And so we want to make sure that we're also consulting with the industry experts on what is, uh, best practice and, and best practice for moving forward as well. But, uh, the, the, uh, the people in this space have certainly been consulted, and I believe we've answered all of the questions or concerns that they have.
Okay, well, with that understanding, I would make the motion then that we accept this proposition. All right, so the motion to accept the recommendations of the Buildings Property and Transportation Committee and Curriculum Assessment of the Public Relations Committee to approve upgrades to the RCH IMC and a cost not to exceed $275,000 for fund balance as presented was made by Mr. Van Landy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Troxell, discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Aye.
I had a question on the color options, if there's other colors available, or, I guess I'm not, not a fan of the draft green.
Uh, this was what Demco put together and thought it was great, so, but it has to match.
And then the quality of the finish on the tables for cleaning purposes. If somebody were to write it with marker on it, is it easy to take off without damaging the table?
Yeah, I don't know that I would say easy to take off, but, um, Demco is the, the national leader in these kinds of, um, furniture, and I think that they're probably, will be easier to take off than any other piece of equipment or furniture that we have in our district. Very, very high quality.
Did you cast your vote?
You did.
Aye.
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 If they're going to be wrong for 40 years.
All right, the preliminary 2024-25 tax levy.
Uh, okay, so you've heard some financial information, you've heard some budget information. Um, one of the things that Mr. Bosworth and I will need some guidance on is, uh, the board has some, some options as it relates to, uh, the tax levy and how that impacts our stakeholders. And so we want to try to talk through a couple of different scenarios with you. We will be looking for, um, some board action, uh, to guide us in, in what this looks like, knowing that the board will have, uh, the final say on the 28th when, when the budget and the levy is, is actually adopted. But, um, we need some, uh, guidance to be able to present, uh, information in our annual meeting and then prepare those numbers accordingly. So, uh, with that, Mr. Bosworth, if I missed anything out, feel free to correct me.
Likewise. All right, this, uh, document is from last spring. Um, as we were talking about two different, uh, potential referendums, and Baird was helping us, uh, understand what are the potential tax impacts. We said that operation referendum could be passed with no tax impact, and that, uh, the capital referendum, the $27 million dollar, uh, based on last year's numbers, they were saying, wow, we think it might be about a $1.10 increase in your, in your mill rate. Uh, potentially going from $9.12 up to $10.10 overall, uh, as a district. As it turns out, uh, the actual mill rate, um, to make the operational and the capital referendums uh, happen, uh, is, is not $10.10, it's in the mid-eights, mid-50-something. Um, realize that there's been a lot of equalized value growth, and remember that, uh, constant, uh, tax rate does not mean, uh, constant total dollars spent by taxpayers. And if we keep the mill rate constant, but the equalized value increases and there is no construction growth, that's more money, um, coming from the same taxpayers. So I just wanted to put this out there, um, that $1.10, uh, we'll come back to that $1.10 um, throughout this, the next few minutes here. You've seen this before, right? The idea of our revenue limit is determined by our membership count, and then how much green gets poured in by the state, how much blue does the taxpayers pick up? Uh, I think I said this already tonight, now we think that's the next year, we're going to get more green because we spent more last year in the, uh, extra spending and the defisance. And, and it lags one year, so we'll get, we'll be aided more next year, um, this current school year, which could, and obviously that's a welcome thing, uh, but it, it could be a one-year phenomenon. So that's one thing I'd like the board to consider, is that this respite from property taxes may be only for one year. So think of the long-term ramifications when we're, um, thinking of what the levy's going to be. So some factors to consider, uh, I just mentioned there, total tax versus levy rate. A consistent levy rate does not necessarily mean that taxes aren't going to change. And so we need to consider, uh, total taxes paid as well as levy rates. Uh, I showed you before the equalized values increase. We'll look at the table again, uh, mostly inflationary. Uh, like we said, the overall average was 8%. About 99% of the growth has been inflation, not a lot of new construction. Um, let me make sure I got you right. Got, okay. Uh, this, this, uh, tax respite, um, the increased equalized aid, maybe a one-year phenomenon, and the budget models we're looking at right now, uh, predict that our mill rate, if nothing else were to change, no defisance whatsoever, would go from, you know, the mid-eights up to $9.06. So that could be, uh, you know, if, if taxes were to remain steady for this year, it could be quite a, a jump for next year, whether we need to, um, make some changes in the levy or just be prepared for that. It's just information for you. And I think we've, uh, covered it all, so we can keep going there. So the numbers that we're going to use tonight are kind of the most recent numbers that we have right now. But I've mentioned before, tomorrow, October 15th, is the big day where the state finalizes the aid, how much green we'll get poured in. Um, we've figured out, uh, how much Fund 39 we would need to just pay our principal and interest, not any defisance. How much money do we need to collect, um, from our, from our taxpayers? Um, just to make sure that any of our debts are covered with scheduled principal and interest. And then we're thinking that Fund 80, the one that we use to, uh, help our school resource officer, as well as, uh, Safe House of School, and maybe, uh, some other couple of things, that would remain steady at 120, that would not change. Well, those are some of our factors as we're looking at these, uh, scenarios tonight. I mentioned that, October 15th tomorrow. Uh, I mentioned this, uh, I mentioned that a couple of times now. Equalized value grew more than Baird was anticipating when they said, we think your levy rate may, may jump to $1.10. And then on top of that, we're getting a little bit more aid, uh, than we anticipated. Showed this before, I'm showing this to you again. Uh, equalized value overall in the district is up 8%. Um, kind of the extremes, Unit Vista, City of RC, and the Town of Richland are kind of the extremes in the middle. And then we also looked at this. Again, the point is just notice that percentages on the far right, most of those are pretty small. Most of those, the new constructions are close to zero, so we should be assuming that, um, increases in value are due to inflation. And we're going to make that assumption in these, in these scenarios that we look at. So we're going to, I'm going to use three municipalities tonight so that you can kind of see the two extremes and the one in the middle. And then we're going to look at four different tax scenarios. So the first one is just base, um, maxing to the revenue, to the, to the, revenue limit authority, uh, assuming that we will ask for the maximum that we can under that process. Fund 80 stays the same, Fund 39, print. Fund Eighty stays the same, Fund Thirty-Nine, principal and interest, to make sure that we cover those, and no defeesence in scenario one. Scenario two, when we were talking with the committee, this $1.10 came up, and the committee said, well, we would like to know what would it look like in the municipality that grew the most? If they saw a dollar, $110 on a $100,000 home, what would that look like in terms of total levy? So that's scenario two. Scenario three, for the last year, four years, the Richland School District has maintained its levy rate at $9.12, so I thought that just seemed like the common one that we could continue to take a look at. And then finally, this $10.22 was the number that Baird had given us last spring, so we used that as our fourth scenario. These are certainly not the only scenarios we could consider, but they seem like the most logical ones for us to wrap our heads around this coming. So in this first scenario, right, we're maximizing our revenue limit inside of the revenue limit authority, there's no defeesence. What would that look like in the town of Buena Vista with eighteen percent growth? So I'm gonna walk through the math with this first scenario, and then I'm not gonna walk through with the next eleven, okay? So the way that you need to think about this is that last year, in the town of Buena Vista, $100,000 home, last year's mill rate was $9.12, so if somebody had a $100,000 home, they would've paid $912 in property taxes towards the school district, right? Homes might be bigger than $100,000, so just multiply by whatever factor you need to, but the mill rates calculated in $100,000, so I think that's the one that we should use. So if Buena Vista grew by eighteen percent, this year, that same home is now worth $118,000 according to equalized value. And if we then multiply that $118,000 by the mill rate that we would need was $8.56, that means that that same home is now gonna pay $110 versus the $912, that same $100,000 home. So that's a difference of $98. So somebody in Buena Vista, same home as last year, their taxes would go up $98 per $100,000, and we would have fulfilled everything that we said we were gonna do with the two referendums, and keeping Fund Eighty the same, and using all of our revenue limit authority. So what would that look like in the town of Richland, where they have an eight percent growth? So it's the same process, you know, $100,000 home, well, this year, in the town of Richland, their homes were $108, not $118, only $108 because they're probably went up eight percent. If you multiply that by the mill rate, their taxes would now be $924, and that's a change of $12. And what does it look like in the city? Where we had one percent growth? Same scenario to start with, but now if you take $101,000, times $8.56, that's $864, that's actually a tax decrease of $48 in scenario one. Okay, scenario two. This was the, you know, the committee asked for, what's the municipality that's growing the most, what would $110 change, how much, what would that look like in the levy? Well, we would do everything we're, is, that we have included in scenario one, as well as the potential to defees $100,000. So the district could collect $100,000 more, and someone who lives in Buena Vista would see that 1.1 mill rate increase, they'd see a $110 increase on a $100,000 home. So that same scenario in Richland would be about a $23 increase. And then, that was the town of Richland, excuse me, the city would see a decrease of about All right, scenario three, the base is still included, but now instead of calculating the mill rate, we just go right away and say it's gonna be $9.12. So overall, the district, that means that we would be able to defee $700,000 and put that towards debt payments. What would that look like in these communities? In Buena Vista, where they saw the greatest equalized value growth, $100,000 home, their taxes would increase $164 now. Now, we're above that $110 that had been previously advertised. The town of Richland, in this $9.12 mill rate scenario, they would see their taxes on a $100,000 home go up $73, and the city, someone in the city, would now see their taxes increase by $9. And then finally, the last scenario, using that $10.22 mill rate that had been previously communicated by Baird, what would this scenario, this would allow the school district to defees an additional $2 million that we would put towards paying down debt, could. Buena Vista, eighteen percent growth, they would see a $100,000 home, their taxes would go up $294 now. Town of Richland, eight percent growth, they would see a $100,000 home, increase of $192. And then in the city with only one percent growth, they would see their taxes go up about $120. And so I'm sure all those numbers are floating in your head, so here's kind of a summary table, so that you can kind of see the four scenarios and the three, three municipalities. The last one there, covered by the box, it's the city of Richland Center, of course. Four scenarios and four tax impacts, and then the bright yellow, of course, is the, what is the, what would the $110 difference in the municipality that saw the greatest growth, what could that look like as a levy for us? And so this is the same slide I showed before we talked about this, and just again, consider we think we're gonna get more aid, more green's gonna pour in next year, we think. Last year, Baird projected a $1.10 increase. It's not that at all, on average, it's in the mid eights. If we do nothing, we think that tax rate may jump to $9.06 next year. And currently, we don't have any sort of extra spending in the 24-25 budget in terms of So those are the four scenarios that we want you to consider, and like Mr. Board said, we're looking for a little bit of guidance as we prepare the budget for the annual meeting and then setting the levy.
Mr. Bosworth, wanna maybe just leave it on that table, the summary?
Yep.
So that option one would be, correct me if I'm wrong here, mill rate of $8.56?
I think so.
Second one, I believe, is a mill rate of $8.66?
Yep.
And then the $9.12 and the $10.22.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but can you find the slide that shows, if there was a slide, what percentage of the population resides in Buena Vista? Does that make sense? Was that a number?
So, I didn't have anything that showed the population, but I had a slide, a different one, that showed what percent of the total equalized value Buena Vista represented. So I could get to that, but I would need to close this and get to a different one, which I can certainly do.
I can search for it here.
But, just to add to that, I mean, one of these is just the highest, there's several of our townships that are in the teens, correct? I saw my township, Dayton Township was fourteen, there were some other ones that were in the twelve. So it would not only be one of these, they will just be the hardest hits, but there are other counties that also have large.
I think this was the one that Mr. Hunter was referring to, that said that Buena Vista's equalized value represents 6.89 percent of the total equalized value in the whole district, so they would pay 6.89 percent of the total tax for the school district. And then the slide that I think Robin's referring to is right there, showing there are other municipalities, eighteen and seventeen, Eagle is fourteen, Intera twelve, Marshall thirteen, Rockbridge thirteen, Sullivan fifteen, Will sixteen. So there are a number of districts that are municipalities that are close to that as well.
And with the levy, or the mill rate amount, we're just deciding that for a single year, correct?
One year.
Then if we need to adjust based on changes next year with how much we get from state aid and such, we can adjust that each annual budget?
Each year, yes, sir.
So I'm summarizing the conversation over here to the right, there are options one and two, all townships and city would go up less than $110 per $100,000, but then we run the risk of it inflating more in year two, and so when they're not expecting an increase, they would get it, as opposed to the referendum that's tacked on now. Whereas if we look at options three and four, then there are more townships than just Buena Vista that are gonna see that higher than $110 increase, but then it could soften the blow for next year when it's going to blow. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Did you happen to do the math on the, with the defeesence, what the interest payment savings would be on scenario two, three, and four?
I did not.
And I apologize for not thinking of that part too.
Certainly could, but I would have to show it to you next week.
You talked about the extra monies that may be available next year. If that were the case, would that soften the blow that you spoke about in Old Rico?
I'm not following what you're saying with the extra monies.
What he talked about was an increase in the tax levy that's gonna be more steep the next time around, if some of that state money does in fact come through, would that be less harmful to the individual taxpayer?
Yeah, it would, but it's difficult to predict what our equalized aid is gonna be from year to year. But it's definitely the idea, yep, the more equalized aid we would get, the less we would need to ask in property taxes.
So, Mr. Bosworth, from understanding the increases, that the $110, that is for the year, correct? So it'd be just under $10 per month?
On a $100,000 home.
Right.
Yes.
Easy to say, hey, let's just do the 10.22, I can afford the ten bucks a month, but I see discrepancies unfair, sorry Buena Vista, your increase was eighteen percent of equalized value, however, it's about a 33% jump from last year's tax to this year's tax, and so it seems as though they're really the ones who are getting stuck more with it. So as I mentioned, it's easy to say, well, hey, let's, defeesence is always good, pay down on the interest, but everybody is already hurting enough. I think that I would be more inclined to try to keep the impact, people's finances as minimal as possible for that one year, because it seems selfish to say, let's go to the full number four, because I only pay ten bucks a month difference on that $100,000 value. So considering we make up in the city 35.76 percent of the total equalized property value, seems like, wow, more than a third of the residents are getting a tax break while everybody else has to make up for the city of Richland Center. So that's where my stance is. I would prefer to keep it at our commitment of no more than $110 per $100,000. And take the tax break myself, but that's specific.
So you're saying number two?
It seems the most fair in what we said ahead of time, and to also consider everybody's financial circumstances in our community, and hope for more prosperous aid next year, or revisit the topic at that point, but take a little bit of a breath for a second for the community, and try not to cause more instability than need be, is my stance.
And what did you say was gonna be next year, projected, 9.06?
9.06, yeah, an increase of about 50.5 or 50 cents.
Scenario number two is 8.66?
So then, the potential for everybody else that's getting the year off is gonna get hit hard the following year. Buena Vista would have a little bit of a hit, is that how I'm understanding this?
That's difficult to predict, because that's based on the equalized value growth, and I, it's hard to say what the state is gonna say where the values are increasing the most. That's what's difficult about this.
The equalized value that is assessed, that is done on an annual basis through the state?
The Department of Revenue does that every single year.
I wouldn't know how you're feeling about it, which, were you kind of leaning on one or two?
Two kind of fulfills what we said we'd do with the referendum as far as to the taxpayers.
Mr. Van Landy?
Wow, I'm not sure. I'm trying to find a way to kind of make this not hurt so much, to follow what we put. I understand what Neil is saying, that hey, we take a breather before we really get hit, before like this November, if we get a more education-friendly legislature, we might be in better straits next year, so I guess vote for people that are pro-education. Don't mean to make a political statement, but I think that's all in our best interests.
Hey, Mr. Van Landy, we're not gonna go down in politics, you're okay?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
So did you, did you pick one, three, four?
Well, I think I agree with what Neil said and what you had said. Number two is the one, right, that Neil, two, and you also said, yeah, I think I concur with that for now. Two, you also said, yeah, I think I concur with that for now.
Mr. Bailey?
I agree, number two. It's fulfilling our promise of our constituents.
Well, I would say that we could move forward with two, with Mrs. Dickman, do you have anything else to, you want to add? Which one are you supporting?
I'm undecided at this time. Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I kind of agree with what Neil said too, so I would probably be for number
I can look at two.
Just for reference, can you cover what defeesence means? So anybody that's not informed on that would understand that part of it.
Yeah, you bet. Defeesence is, there are only a couple of situations where a school district can ask for more money than what the revenue limit says you can ask for and whatever your debt obligations are. Defeesence is one of those. You can tax more money, but that money has to go towards paying down debt. You can't use it for more buses, you can't use it for more basketballs. It has to go towards paying off debt and then saving, of course, saving on interest costs down the road. That's what the defeesence is.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. One, I agree with what Mrs. Dickman pointed out earlier, that it's not just Buena Vista. If we go down the road of number two, there's going to be a whole lot of townships that are paying at ten-plus percent that went up in value, that's going to get hit pretty darn hard next year when it goes from eight something over nine something, just something to be aware of. And my other question is, by paying more defeesence, hearing that with the equalized aid and how paying ahead or paying defeesence and having the extra money spent is what lowered the tax rate, but is going to correct itself next year because we won't have that money available to spend, at what point is it going to really correct itself as far as equalized aid less and less by paying more defeesence? And that nine dollars and six cents becoming ten dollars and twenty-two cents? I know that's a big question, but...
I think I know what you're saying there, but firstly, I don't know if I can answer that. I think I would need to lean on our resources at Baird to try to, and they've been hesitant because Mr. Board and I have asked them to try to predict the next two and three years, and they've been hesitant to give us answers, but we can ask again.
Because, so they originally predicted that number, scenario two and scenario four were similar, right? That if we raised the mill rate to ten point two-two, that would only result in the one hundred and ten. Is that correct? But then that was, did not turn out to be correct because of the equalized aid. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, the ten twenty-two was going to be on the district as a whole, on average, but of course, you can see, depending upon what municipality you're in, it can vary greatly. Some people's taxes may actually go down and some people's taxes may go up, could potentially go up way more than ten twenty-two.
Way more than one ten. So that's why sometimes, this is why I lean a little bit more towards three. And also, back to your original point, so Baird's a little hesitant to predict because they didn't predict so well before, maybe?
I think they tried to predict very conservatively for this school year, and it turned out we were aided more than they anticipated. The value, equalized value, were more than they were thinking. And then actually, the total pot of equalized aid actually increased a little bit this year, on top of the whole, for those reasons too.
I think one slight positive for a little bit of solace is because there is a hundred thousand in defeesence in this number two proposal, if next year the evaluation was to adversely impact certain areas, might be able to come back and remove the defeesence to help offset that slightly, since it is paying down old debt. And so that's just kind of a play that while it might be a minimal impact, it is at least a half a point, I think, based on some of the calculations, that could be a fairly significant little chip off of there, so to speak.
Any other input from the board? All right, well, it sounds like distraught when you're going around the table, that scenario two is the most popular one. So then is there a motion to approve scenario two for the 2024, 2025 preliminary tax levy?
I'll make that.
Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Bailey, in discussion. Mr. Van Landay?
Aye.
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 Referendum project approval process.
Okay, so as we are working with Nexus and we are finalizing the design phase at the primary school, we're about ninety-five percent done with that design phase. In fact, this Thursday is the calendar date that they have designated to have a hundred percent completion of the design phase. And so once the design phase is done, and everything from what kind of marker boards and floor tile and all that kind of stuff is solidified, then they're going to go out to bid, right? And the bidding process will start. And so when we get through the bidding process, then the construction phase for the primary school is scheduled to start next spring. After the design phase is done at the primary school, we're moving into the design phase of the intermediate school, we've already started that. That bidding process is looking to start after the first of the year, with also construction happening next summer. Nexus is wanting, they have every school district go through a process so that they know what or whom to approach when it comes to changes or change orders or things that come up. Some things maybe are bigger, some things are smaller, and their whole point is they want as streamlined of a process as possible that the local entity feels comfortable with so that the projects don't get delayed, okay? And so this was brought to our Buildings and Property Committee, and Buildings and Property Committee members have tweaked this just a little bit from what you saw, so if you are not in agreement with what I'm asking here, feel free to chime in. But I tried to put in a couple of safeguards. First, maybe a little historical perspective. In 2016, the board had given the district administrator the ability to approve change orders and keep the projects going up to twenty-five thousand dollars, okay? Smaller things that they just didn't want to get hung up on, waiting for a committee meeting or a board meeting to occur, all right? So one of the asks is that a similar process happens, but that instead of just putting that on the district administrator, that up, change orders up to twenty-five thousand dollars can occur with district administrator and Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee Chairman, Chairperson. And right now, that would be Mr. Huntimer. So if the two of us can say, yep, this is something that needs to happen, let's move that hole in the wall from here over to here, that's going to be a thirteen thousand dollar change, it's under the twenty-five, then we can make that approval and that we can keep the project moving, okay? So that's one of the asks. The other ask is that there is maybe some discretion or approval given to the Buildings and Property Transportation Committee as a whole to have some other approvals done in a little bit more expedited process. And they may have, and they're fully aware of this, that they may have special meetings and more frequent meetings to make these things happen. One of those is to allow the BPT Committee members to review any bid specs as well as the bid proposals that come in and select a vendor. And this is the part that I added. And if that is unanimous by those that are present at the Buildings and Property Transportation Committee meeting, okay, if they all agree, yep, this is the way we should do it, we should just approve this vendor, then it just moves forward, okay? And that vendor is approved. But if they have any discrepancies in which way they're leaning, then those bids would come to the board as a whole, okay? And they would act on it. So if there's, if the board, if the committee cannot agree in whole, then it would come to the board. And then also to allow the VPT Committee, again, as a whole, to approve change orders up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're very familiar with the buildings and the property that we have. And so things bigger than twenty-five thousand, but less than a hundred and fifty, should come to the committee. And again, if they approve that as a whole and everybody agrees on it, then that would pass. If they are disagreement, then it would come to the full board. And this would allow them, again, to have maybe a quick meeting, meeting notices for Buildings and Property Committee, or any committee, only has to be posted twenty-four hours in advance. So Nexus could come to us on a Tuesday, say, hey, we've got an issue with the heating coils, we've got to make some changes here, it's a forty thousand dollar change, but this needs to happen. Buildings and Property Committee could find that out on Tuesday, everybody's available on Thursday, we can post for it on Wednesday, that happened, as opposed to having to wait for the regular meeting or a board meeting. But yet, it also has some safeguards if Buildings and Property Committee doesn't, you know, go ahead and add a new gymnasium on to the end of our building for three point three billion or something like that. And any other situations, just come to the board. And there may be times where Nexus comes to us on a Wednesday, and we've already got a board meeting scheduled for Monday, and we maybe can just revise the agenda because that seems most practical. But it does give us the ability to maybe get together that committee and give them a little bit more power than what they normally have in an effort to try to keep the projects moving. So again, I'll turn it to the chair first. Did I miss anything, or again, any of those tweaks are you uncomfortable with?
No, I've reached my word quota for the night, so we're good.
As have I. Which is why I have to have a PowerPoint. Okay, thanks, I'll turn it back to you, that's the ask.
All right, is there a motion then to accept recommendation from the Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee to delegate decisions regarding referendum projects as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I would not have to abstain, correct? I am voting to give myself power.
No.
Okay. Mr. Bailey?
I am going to abstain just for that reason, but I want to make sure the other board members gives the committee that power.
Aye.
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 All right, appointments, resignations, retirements of certified staff.
And again, this is one of those things that will be on every agenda for the board to act on. We don't have any appointments, resignations, or retirements of certified staff before there is no action needed, and we'll end that agenda topic.
For the same. In fact, I'll make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to statutes nineteen point eight-five-one C and/or F as appropriate, to consider employment, promotion, and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and administrative evaluations, and Wisconsin statutes one eighteen point one-two-five, to discuss student enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bailey, in discussion. Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 Thank you.